Good evening and welcome to the 7:30 meeting of Lynchburg City Council. And please stand for invocation by Councilmember Wright, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in a moment of contemplation. Today we gather in service of our community. We gather to improve the quality of life for our fellow citizens and to ensure our collective safety, health, and happiness. Please grant us the strength and wisdom to evaluate the issues in front of us objectively, thoughtfully, and in a spirit of genuine collaboration and sincere goodwill. The challenges facing Lynchburg are great, but so too are the possibilities. We offer thanks for the many talented professionals who come to work on behalf of our city each day, and for the opportunity afforded to us as members of this body and community to join them in this humbling service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we are happy to have several recognitions to start off our meeting. And the first is the recognition of one of our newer downtown restaurants that was recently recognized with a very prestigious award. The second recognition is for what has become a 60-year-old tradition in our community with the Lynchburg Exchange Club and the Pancake Jamboree. And lastly, but certainly not least, we are recognizing our very own Department of Economic Development and Tourism. And so I'm going to come down to the mic a minute, just so we can get through all of these. Thank you. First, I would like to call our proprietors, owners of The Water Dog to come forward. The Water Dog Restaurant. The Water Dog Restaurant received the Ordinary Award. Ordinary, but not the least ordinary. Last week, downtown restaurant, The Water Dog, received the Ordinary Award in the category of Restaurant of the Year. The Ordinary Award presented by the Virginia Restaurant Lodging and Travel Association celebrates all of Virginia's restaurants, lodging establishments, and hotels, attractions, and more. The award is named after Chin's Ordinary, which is considered the oldest original inn in America, and speaks to all facets of hospitality, restaurants, lodging, and travel. Lynchburg natives and brothers Dave and Chris Henderson came onto the downtown Lynchburg scene in 2016 when they opened The Water Dog as their first restaurant venture. Dave and Chris envisioned The Water Dog as a vehicle for community participation and collaboration. On day one, they began looking for ways to use their business to serve the community, and over the last three years have done so in more ways than I think and can even count. They support local nonprofits through profit-sharing nights, free hosting of charity events, and donating food to nonprofit fundraisers. Between The Water Dog and their newly acquired music venue just across the street, The Glass House, they donated over 10,000 annually to local nonprofits. I think I need to say that again. They donated over 10,000 annually to local nonprofits. In addition to their philanthropic work, their impact on the community can be felt through the vibrancy they bring to our downtown district with their local business partnership events. By working collaboratively with nearby businesses, The Water Dog has continued to be a vibrant downtown scene. These activities are important to the continued growth and revitalization of our downtown as they attract more and more people to our urban core. And so on behalf of council, myself, the administration, we want to recognize and congratulate Dave and Chris on the Ordinary Award and their contribution to the city of Lynchburg. And thank you. This is the award that he received, so here you go. And thank you. Thank you.
My brother's here in spirit. He's literally here in spirit. I would have never expected to have ever won something like this, much less be nominated. I do want to give my sincerest and most humble gratitude towards the Lynchburg Economic Development Authority, Anna Marjet, and the Downtown Lynchburg Association, Ashley Kirchner. These individuals are the reason why I'm standing here today. And so we have a wonderful establishment. I hope it helps downtown, but I literally would not be standing here if it weren't for those two, Anna, Marjet, and Ashley. So, thank you.
Next is another great opportunity to recognize, and one of my favorites because I like pancakes, so. The Lynchburg Exchange Club. If I could have all the representatives from the Exchange Club to come up, and we have a proclamation. Thank you. Well-represented. Thank you. Thank you so much. And also, I like to help make them, too, so volunteering is fine. This is a proclamation, the Lynchburg Exchange Club and Pancake Jamboree Day. Whereas the Lynchburg Exchange Club of Virginia was chartered in 1938 by local business leaders who wanted to exchange ideas on making the community better, its core values of family, community, and country are held by each Exchange Club member with pride and commitment. And whereas nationally founded in 1911, Exchange Club volunteer efforts have supported the needs of the country and of local communities for over 100 years, making it the country's oldest American service organization operating exclusively in this country. And whereas for 60 years, the Lynchburg Exchange Club has held the Pancake Jamboree as its sole fundraiser, with all funds staying in the community to support not only the club's own community service programs, but also other worthwhile community service programs. And whereas over the years, the Lynchburg Exchange Club has given financial support to the Boys and Girls Club, CASA, Crime Stoppers of Central Virginia, Girl State, Lynchburg Area Veterans Council, Miller Home of Lynchburg, and many other deserving organizations. And whereas in fiscal year 2017 through 2018 alone, the Pancake Jamboree raised nearly $16,000 to enable the club to continue the tradition of great community service. And whereas on Friday, Friday, an important date, November 1st, 2019, the Lynchburg Exchange Club will host its 60th Annual Pancake Jamboree at the Lynchburg Armory between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Now therefore I, Trenae L. Tweedy, Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, do hereby proclaim Friday, November 1st, 2019, Lynchburg Exchange Club and Pancake Jamboree Day. And encourage everyone to come out and support the Exchange Club and their community service effort. November 1st, that important day. Trenae L. Tweedy, Mayor. Thank you.
Just real quick, on behalf of the Exchange Club of Lynchburg, we would truly like to thank this community again for 60 years for supporting us, and it is truly a community event and probably one of the few events you'll find everyone on city council preparing your meal. So, we hope you'll show up and support us again this year. Thank you.
And the pancakes are great, and the sausage, and yeah, everything that goes along with it. So, remember November 1st, down at the Armory. All right. Finally, but not least, the Office of Economic Development and Tourism Excellence in Economic Development Gold Award. On Tuesday, October 15th, if I could get Ms. Upsher to come up, our Director of Economic Development. Thank you. On Tuesday, October 15th, the International Economic Development Council awarded the city of Lynchburg an Excellence in Economic Development Gold Award for the 2018 Year in Review Annual Report produced by the Office of Economic Development and Tourism. IEDC's prestigious awards program recognizes world's best economic development marketing materials, programs, and partnerships honoring organizations and individuals for their efforts in creating positive change in urban, suburban, and rural communities. Marjet Upsher, Director of Economic Development and Tourism, accepted the award at IEDC's annual conference in Indianapolis. Promotional awards are judged on the effectiveness of the promotion, innovation, creativity, quality, and completeness of information and contribution to the economic development profession. Congratulations, Marjet, to your team and the marketing firm, 434 Marketing, who assisted with the production of the annual report.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Can my team come up here? Krista, Anna, 434, just for a minute. It takes a village. This is truly a, was a great effort, and I just want to say, this is the report. It was our 2018 report. And if they had seen this one, which they will, will nominate it again. This knocked the cover off the ball one more time. This is a team of people that helped do this, but all the figures that are in here are each one of you in this community, and we couldn't be more proud of that. The population that we are considered in for this award is between, is over 25,000, but up to 200,000. So, that's who we're compared against to get this award. Not too shabby. Thank you.
Thank you for all of that recognition. It's great to be able to have some good opportunities to recognize folks, so, thank you. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into three sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearings, and General Business. The first section is the Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Don't move. Second?
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Please cast your vote. And the Consent Agenda is approved and passed. Thank you. This public hearings is next, and this section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and the group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed and the matter referred to council for deliberation. First is number eight, public hearing to receive comments on the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, and the Federal Highway Administration Environmental Assessment for the US 501 and US 221 Lynchburg Expressway and Lakeside Drive Intersection Improvements Project. So staff will provide a brief summary, and Mr. Newland is coming for it.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this is a public hearing for the environmental assessment for the project that you mentioned. It was released on Friday, September the 20th of this year. Prior to the public hearing here, the city has had a presentation outside, I'd say a presentation, a viewing session for the project. It was held from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock this evening. It was open for people to ask questions and get informations about the project. We have a court reporter here tonight to record any and all comments from the public, and all the comments will be due in by November the 6th of 2019. With me here tonight, I have Lucian Tender from TY Lynn. He is our consultant that has prepared the environmental assessment for us, and he has some information that he has to read to put into the public record.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Lucian Tender. I'm TY Lynn's project manager for the US 501 and US 221 National Environmental Policy Act Environmental Assessment. The EA has been conducted in coordination with the federal highways and also with the Virginia Department of Transportation. It looked at the potential environmental impacts for a number of alternative concepts that are meant to address queuing lengths, safety, and to increase capacity along the project corridor. And it compares those impacts to the no-build alternative. As Lee alluded to, the draft environmental assessment document was recently released for public review, and we did just complete our second public meeting for the project. And we're here tonight to conduct the public hearing on the project, to hear comments from the council, and also, public comments can be received through our court reporter that's here. Would like to note that public comments can also be made through the project website. There are hard copies of the environmental assessment and comment cards located at the engineering department at the library and at the local district VDOT office. We will be responding, listening to comments tonight, but will not be responding to them this evening. The process for that is to continue to coordinate with FHWA and VDOT. We'll receive those comments until the end of the comment period, which, as we mentioned, was November 6th. Then we'll review those comments. The comments will be addressed. They'll become part of the public record, and they'll be posted on the project website, so the public has an opportunity to see those responses. So, as you mentioned, we do have a court reporter here to record everything, and if you'll indulge me for just a moment, I have something to read into the public record as part of the process?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, City of Lynchburg and VDOT's Lynchburg District Environmental Office have initiated environmental reviews and coordination to obtain information about environmental resources in the project vicinity, to provide natural and historic resource agencies an opportunity to review and comment on the project during its development, and to identify opportunities for avoidance, minimization, and mitigation of potential environmental impacts. The National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, document in the form of a draft environmental assessment, has been prepared for the project in cooperation with Federal Highway Administration and in accordance with federal guidelines. The NEPA document includes information from various technical reviews, including those related to natural resources, water quality, threatened endangered species, air quality, noise, and others. Also in compliance with the National Historic Preservation Act, Section 106 and 36 CFR Part 800, information concerning the potential effects of the proposed project on properties listed in or eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places is provided in the project's environmental documentation. Project will continue to be coordinated with the appropriate federal, state, and local agencies as part of various environmental review processes, and all required environmental clearances and permits will be obtained prior to commencement of construction. Strict compliance with all environmental conditions and commitments resulting from those regulatory approvals and implementation of VDOT specifications and standard best-managed practices will protect the environment during construction. The NEPA document and the results of other environmental studies are now available for review. And that concludes the statement.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Uh-huh. All right. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who has comments? For or against, or just comments, period? Please come forward. Uh-huh.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening, sir.
Members of the council? Good to be back in the chamber. If you would create another position, I would run for it.
Sir, could I have your name, please?
I'm Gil Cobbs.
Thank you. Can you spell it for me?
G.I.L. Gilliam, if you like.
Got it. Thank you.
It's really nice to be back. When I heard that the project was going forward in, at the reference juncture, I jumped with joy, literally. I travel there, through there every day, sometimes as many as three times a day, and everybody who does that will know how badly we are in need of improvements. I just want to ask that, well, let me say this, I've had a wonderful time talking to the consultants, and we are mighty proud and lucky to have people of that caliber helping us with this project of such magnitude. But I wondered if we have made ample use of the roundabouts, of which I am so much in love with. I don't see any in this one, not that they have to have them, but just want to make sure that we have explored this option to the hilt. And also, I'm wondering if we have made the fullest use of a straight line, four lanes going this way, four lanes going this way. We see that a lot around the country, and some traffic congestion is alleviated by the, I call them for lack of the right term, the over and unders. And I've talked with one of the consultants, and he gave me his opinion, and I appreciate that very much, but I would ask that additional study be given to those three pieces. I would be grateful, but no matter what happens there, I'm going to be grateful because it's going to be better than what we got now. Thank you very much. Nice to be here with you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andre Miller. After reading the study, I found the report to be flawed and half-baked. I think the study is narrow in scope and only looks at the intersection area. It doesn't take into account the road network itself, future development outside the area that traffic will have to travel through, other solutions simply because of cost. I think the ultimate solution is completion of the expressways, linking them together as one. But this solution was eliminated because of cost. If we can't achieve real solutions because of cost, then whatever solutions we do approve should be the step in the right direction to the ultimate solution. The proposed alternative does not take the step in the right direction. It is only a short-term solution, and traffic will only get worse. It promotes more of the same development surrounding the area, which will lead to more traffic. It shifts traffics around to add more capacity, but wait times will still be the same or longer, and it will make it harder and take longer to access businesses already in the area. It doesn't take into account future traffic outside the area or the reason why traffic is there in the first place. And the answer is the road network itself. All traffic in and outside the area has to come through that intersection. The study doesn't look at other roads or new roads that could reduce traffic in the intersection. McConville Road, Breeze Wood Drive, Jefferson Ridge Parkway, Wigginton Road, Forest Brook Road should have all been included in the study. These improvements to these roads will dramatically reduce traffic at the intersection, allowing traffic to bypass the area. The city of Lynchburg should reject the study and propose alternatives and adopt a long-term program to improve the intersection area and other roads in the area that ends with completion of the expressways with a full interchange. I propose the city start with a two, two-way split road system, linking the expressways together, upgrading O'Forre's Road and Lakeside Drive and adding connected roads between them to control traffic and access businesses, and access to businesses. It should also restrict development from occurring in the right-of-way of the future expressway. Over time, the city can improve roads in the area and eventually build the expressway as originally intended, as this should be the ultimate solution to the problem. A two-way road instead of a one-way road will separate traffic instead of combining it all into a massive roundabout. The two, two-way road solution allows traffic to move through the area quickly, access businesses directly, and spreads traffic out more evenly instead of packing it all through. It should limit left turns at the intersections, eliminating conflict points and allowing traffic to flow. Access roads between O'Forre's Road and Lakeside Drive will control access and handle future traffic from new development. Improvements to Whitehall Road and Chapel Lane will also help reduce traffic. Widening medians, sidewalks to O'Forre's Road and Lakeside Drive will improve traffic flow, right turn movements, and allow protection and access to this area. This is the best, this is, this solution is the best step in the first step to achieving the ultimate goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Are there any other comments? Going once? Going twice? All right, thank you. I don't see that there are. This is not for approval or action required by council, but I know it has been reviewed by the Physical Development Committee before, and so if our chairman, Councilmember Perrow, has any comments or thoughts on that?
No, ma'am. I don't wish to add anything at this time. It's, VDOT, of course, is following the process, as is the city. This is the necessary step in making sure that we get the federal funds. I do very much appreciate the comments that were made tonight. I thought they were insightful and good, and I'm glad they're being recorded in the record. So, no further comments from the committee. I don't believe, ma'am, and I don't believe there's any action to take. Is that correct? Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you, VDOT, for setting up out in our hallway as well, out in our common area, I'm sorry, for anyone to look at the project and to discuss with you those things that are needed. So, this concludes our public hearing with no further comments, and thank you very much for being here this evening. Next is our general business. This section includes general items of new business. Number nine, consideration of approving a resolution for a name change from the Central Virginia Metropolitan Planning Organization, or CVMPO, to the Central Virginia Transportation Planning Organization, CVTPO. The transportation planning director for the Central Virginia Planning District Commission will provide a presentation, Mr. Scott Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. First, I've been asked to thank you for participating in our Planning District Commission strategic planning process last week. Your engagement and involvement is much appreciated. The Central Virginia MPO serves as the federally designated metropolitan planning organization for the central Virginia urbanized area, which includes the city of Lynchburg and portions of Amherst, Bedford, and Campbell counties. Via an agreement with the state, the Central Virginia Planning District Commission houses the MPO and serves as its staff. Our primary responsibilities include approving the expenditure of federal funding through the Transportation Improvement Program, developing and maintaining the region's long-range transportation plan, and serving as a conduit for transportation planning across jurisdictional lines. With the intention of supporting our efforts to better interface with the public and foster a better understanding of what our organization does, the CVMPO Policy Board voted in July to adopt changes to its bylaws, which, among other things, changed this organization's official name to the Central Virginia Transportation Planning Organization, or CVTPO. Since we only engage in transportation-related activities, we think this name will be more descriptive and will help avoid occasional confusion with other agencies and organizations in the area. Other MPOs in Virginia that have already made this change are Richmond, Roanoke, and Hampton Roads. Before submitting the name change to the Secretary of Transportation, Shannon Valentine, we are asking our member localities to adopt the resolution that you have before you. This resolution replaces similar documents adopted in 1979 and 2000. The Town and County of Amherst and the County of Campbell adopted the resolution earlier this month, and Bedford County has it on their agenda for next week. We appreciate your assistance and support in this endeavor, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And if no one, oh, Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as the current chair of the Central Virginia Metropolitan Planning Organization, and also part of the committee that reassessed our bylaws, we made the recommendation to change our name with staff's guidance to the Central Virginia Transportation Planning Authority for exactly the reasons that Mr. Smith said. Honestly, nobody knows what the MPO does. It's a federal requirement that a metropolitan planning organization allocate or review the funding applications that are coming through for the entire area. So it's a critical function that we have that is necessary to obtain the federal funding, very similar to the way the public hearing that was just held is necessary to obtain the public funding. This at least will allow citizens, because we do have public comment periods at most every one of our meetings, this allows the opportunity for our citizens to better understand what we are about so that they can take part in the public process, just like we had tonight. So, Madam Mayor, I move the resolution, and I hope the council will join me in supporting this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions?
Second.
All right. There's a motion first made, and second, if no further discussion, please cast your vote. Do you have any further?
that we had the other day, because it got to bring up lots of different, you know, items, hearing the fact that Central Virginia, lots of other places call themselves Central Virginia. So, there was no discussion about that, though.
In 1969, the state assigned Lynchburg to be called Central Virginia. That's why we have a community college, the Planning District Commission was named that at the time.
So Charlottesville and Richmond have kind of stole it so we can go back and...
Well, you know, it's obviously a shared designation, but we've, we've maintained the Central Virginia designation since we were formed, the MPO, in the early 1970s. So, for the sake of consistency, we would recommend keeping that.
Yeah. And the metropolitan, I mean, it does, it, it has never sounded like Lynchburg, you know? It's almost like a, you know, a cosmopolitan kind of cliche, so I'm glad to support the change.
I need Mr. Smith's help on this, but if we grow by like a couple of thousand more people, like a couple, ten thousand more people, the MPO or the TPOs will actually have funds to be able to allocate to transportation. How many, what, only 100,000 or so?
If the urbanized area, which is that Lynchburg city and then parts of the surrounding counties, grow to 200,000, we become something called a TMA, another acronym for you, and we actually receive some construction funds. We don't anticipate that happening until after 2040. We actually haven't forecasted very far.
It's close. It's really close.
So, what is the organization, or not the organization, but the geography, that's about 250,000 right now? That would be called...
So, that's, that's the city of Lynchburg and the counties of Amherst, Appomattox, Bedford, and Campbell. The urbanized area goes out to Concord, up to the town of Amherst, out to Goode, and out to Forest.
And out Campbell County.
Campbell County goes to Rustburg, Rustburg, yeah. It's the area that is urbanized or that we expect will become urbanized in the next 20 years.
No further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriate $65,000 for the Lynchburg Adult Drug Treatment Court awarded with resources from the Supreme Court of Virginia Drug Treatment Court docket grant. The grant is administered by the Supreme Court of Virginia, and staff will provide a brief summary. Mr. Wingfield, thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'm Eugene Wingfield, a clerk of the Circuit Court. Here tonight, I ask for appropriation of $65,000, which is a 100% reimbursable grant through the Supreme Court Drug Treatment Court. This is for a new position, which would be called the Drug Coordinator for the Circuit Court, and want to answer directly to the judge who oversees this program within our court system. Lynchburg has had a drug court for about two years now, but it's been on much of an entry-level, basic kind of system. We've had some success with it. By adding this coordinator's position allows us to increase the program from its current, where we can probably take 10 or 12 people, even though we've never reached that level, to as many as 24. It also gives us the ability to, to give a broader range of participants who we can allow into the program, such as first offenders, where you could not do that previously, it was only people who had violated probation, and some of those folks unfortunately had their addiction levels of whether it be drug or alcohol was at such a high rate, it was really hard for us and our group, including Horizon Treatment Center, to get them back to a point where they needed to be. With this program at this level, and with the coordinator who will oversee the operation and all the participants in the program, we'll be able to take those first offenders and hopefully catch them at a much earlier stage, where the, with the treatment programs we offer will give them more assistance to be more productive citizens in the community and not see them back before the court. The $65,000 will be used exclusively to pay the salary and benefits of the person who will be hired, who has yet to be hired, and hopefully do so in early November and get them started. This grant began and was awarded on beginning of July of 2019, July 1, and it runs through the end of June of 2020. At that time, we can put in for an additional year grant to maintain this program and kind of follow its progress, and hopefully successes. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. I'm quite confident I probably left something out that maybe you need answered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wingfield. I'm sure if we'll have any, we'll give them to you, but this went to Finance Committee, so I'm going to turn to Councilmember Hegelsohn, who is the Chair, for further discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wingfield, earlier today, when we had the presentation for the Exchange Club, we noticed that your much younger sister was here, and I thought for sure she was going to stay for this presentation, but I guess she, she has left, so...
Which is probably true, so she left quickly.
Yeah, yeah. But we discussed this at length, and we recognize there are some challenges with the, with the drug court, as far as making sure folks, that there is treatment, there's, you know, abatement of addiction and whatnot. With this, there is some flux with Judge Burnett retiring fairly soon, and so Mr. Wingfield has put together the precautions in case it doesn't go forward, because it's a grandfunded position. Hopefully, it will go forward, because lots of us were at the drug court graduation, and we appreciated the fact of hearing the stories of, of young men and women that were addicted or incarcerated, and now there's been an abeyance of that. And so, we appreciate that. Finance Committee met and recommends it for approval.
All right. Thank you. There's no second needed. Is there any further discussion? All right. Thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero, and good luck with that. Hopefully it will work out well. Thank you.
I have one more.
Yes, that's fine. Number 10 is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget and appropriate $9,429 with resources from the State Compensation Board, Technology Trust Fund fees to support information technology needs in the office of the Circuit Court, and I'll turn to Mr. Wingfield again.
The trust, trust technology, the Technology Trust Fund grant, which we refer to as CTF, is awarded each year through the monies collected within the office through recordings and land records. These monies are used for pay the maintenance fees that we have to reimburse to the state. It has to be appropriated by the city. It's been a standing amount of $25,000, has been included in the city's budget toward our office each year for that, in which is an ample amount to cover the maintenance fees. However, this year, we have to replace a server in the office, and so it's, it's requiring an extra $9,000 to $200 plus dollars to cover that expense, which again is 100% reimbursable. So, once the server's installed, we pay for it through the city funds, and then it's re-surfied back to the city 100% to cover those costs.
Thank you very much. This also went to the Finance Committee this morning, and I'll turn to Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This one didn't have as, as much excitement as the previous one, and much discussion, since it's purchasing a new server, we recommend an approval.
All right. Thank you. If no further questions, please cast your vote. And that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriate $34,930 with resources from the 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, or JAG, to purchase law enforcement equipment for the Lynchburg Police Department, Lynchburg Sheriff's Office, and the Office of Commonwealth Attorney. And Chief Zudema will present the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. This is the JAG grant that we brought in front of you last month for application approval. This is shared, as you mentioned, with the three agencies. We'll be using this in the police department to purchase cameras, as well as some accessories for firearms. And the sheriff's office, it'll be used to upgrade a recording system for their phones and their radio traffic, and in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, it'll be used for purchasing two computers. There's no matching funds. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. And again, this did go twice to the Finance Committee on September 24th and October 22nd, so I'll turn to our Chair, Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, on the 24th, we approved the submission of the grant, and then today, this morning, we approved the adoption of the grant, and hopefully the rest of council will, will follow that recommendation. The beauty of this JAG grant is the fact that our, our, our police department and the Chief of Police and their ancillary folks submit the application, administer the application, and it's synergistic with the sheriff's office as well as the Commonwealth Attorney. And so, they all come together and they divide that based on need and based on personnel allotment, and so we're happy to make that as approval.
All right. Thank you. If there are any further question? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is number 13, consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriate $24,517 with resources from the 2019 State Homeland Security Program grant through the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to purchase law enforcement equipment for the Lynchburg Police Department, and Chief Zudema will again present the request.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a grant that was awarded to us through VDM, as you mentioned. We're going to use this grant to purchase two long-range acoustic devices that'll be used to effectively and efficiently communicate with individuals who are in crisis, as well as during natural disasters or any other type of crisis. You know, I use this example every time when I talk about this project, but you know, when the dam, we had the issues with the dam last year, this would have been a great opportunity to be able to communicate with residents, the capability this technology can, can carry the sound into a residence so that we can warn folks of danger, as well as communicate with people and keep our folks safe, as, as well as others. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Again, this went to Finance Committee, and I will turn to Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As, as the Chief has stated, that this, the long-range acoustical devices will be used for, you know, public safety, they won't be used for showing off a children's accordion skills by any means. So, we appreciate that, and it's, we recommend it for approval.
All right. Thank you. If there's no further questions, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. And the motion passes seven to zero. I got you. You gotta laugh. Next is number 14, consideration of adopting a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriate $42,612 with resources of $21,306 transferred, well, from the Bulletproof Vest Partnership 2019 grant program, and $21,306 transferred from the fiscal year 2020 General Fund Police Department, $18,506, and Sheriff's Office $2,800 budgets to purchase replacement bulletproof vests for law enforcement officers. And Chief Zunema, did I make that clear on the amounts? I want to make sure everyone's not confused the way I read that, so...
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
This is the annual grant we receive, and we administer this for the sheriff's office and for the police department. There are matching funds, it's a 50/50 match. However, we've already had those funds allocated in both the sheriff's office and the police department's budget. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Again, this went to the Finance Committee this morning. Chairman Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With this, I'm delighted that they have done this for numerous years, that they budgeted, and they planned on hopefully receiving the grant requests, because obviously we want to make sure our officers are safe as possible. As you wear a bulletproof vest over a period of time, the utilization of it, the sweat, all the perspiration, the salt and whatnot, kind of has a tendency to degrade them after a while, so they typically have maybe a five-year shelf life, and so they still probably work, but we want to make sure that they work as best as possible. We're glad that you have thought this through, glad that you're submitting this request, also with the sheriff's department, and we made him recommend approval.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Next is number 15, adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriate $91,750 with resources from the 2019 State Homeland Security Program grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to fund equipment and training for the fire department technical rescue team. And Chief Wormser will make this presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. This grant is pass-through money for our state technical rescue team to provide them with necessary lifting capabilities, to provide some heavy lifting capabilities that we do, we currently do not have. Additionally, we're going to provide our staff with training for large animal rescue, as we discussed earlier in Finance Committee today. A large animal rescue is something that has become a little more prevalent in our area. We do cover, obviously, geographical locations outside the city of Lynchburg, and as you can imagine, large animals are quite an asset to farmers and other neighbors in our neighboring locality. So, it's important for us to be able to provide that service to them as an all-hazards community to ensure that we provide everybody with the best possible outcome. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Chief. And this went to Finance Committee on May 28th and October 22nd. Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, with this, glad to see that the Chief is finding other opportunities for grants. I didn't mention it this morning, but I do remember, it's probably been a year or two ago, we were heading to a meeting at the GLTC, the new building, right off Kemper Street, and right in front of me came a very large animal, a cow that escaped the butchery. And it was, I mean, several thousand pounds, and then it went down, and so, but having, apparently that cow somehow got back, but it is nice to have that, the equipment, and as you mentioned, you know, sometimes it's utilized in the various counties or other areas as well, plus the other, the Swift Water Rescue is the best equipment that we can have, means our guys will be safer, and ladies. So, we recommend it for approval.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Next is number 16, adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriate $76,000 with resources from the 2019 State Homeland Security Program grant from U.S. Department of Homeland Security to fund water rescue equipment and training for the fire department technical rescue team. Chief Wormser.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. So, this grant is for Swift Water training and Swift Water equipment only, so with this grant, we will be purchasing some new equipment to replace aged equipment that is no longer serviceable. Additionally, we'll be providing training to the remaining members of our staff who do not have boat operator courses and other Swift Water training. A lot of that training is conducted at the National Whitewater Center in Charlotte, North Carolina, and so it's very important for us to get staff to that training to ensure the best, again, the best possible outcome for the citizens that we serve. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. This also went to Finance Committee. Thank you, Chief Wormser. And I will turn to our Chair, Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayors. I mentioned on the last grant that we did discuss the Swift Water Rescue, and this is, this is the actual grant, and we made a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. No further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Next is number 17, consideration of adopting the final 2020 legislative agenda, and staff will provide a presentation. I believe this is Mr. Erwin.
Council, we're asking you to approve the 2020 legislative agenda for the city. The version we've brought back to unite tonight includes the changes that were previously discussed with council, and there are two new additions, the provisions that were discussed at the October 8 meeting. The first one authorizes the city to ask that the 2,000 legislation concerning the creation of an airport authority be amended so the city can proceed with the authority on its own if neither Amherst or Appomattox or Bedford or Campbell County wants to partner with us. The second change that we included as a result of the last council meeting's discussions are to ask the state to address the issues arising out of the provision of emergency transports for emergency custody orders and temporary detention orders, to ask the state to look at such things as an overhaul of the system, to provide more reimbursement money to localities for incurring the cost of those transports, and to also look at providing more local beds for mental health patients.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any question, or will someone make a motion? Yes, Councilmember Perro.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution, the resolution for adoption of the legislative agenda.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded. Would you have any further discussion?
Just, I wanted to thank the city for, for taking the other considerations into mind. I think this could be, it would be a good year for us. The legislative agenda is compact enough, there's no, there are no big ass, it's mainly administrative things, and if we can get the, if, if we can get the detention orders worked out, a little bit of money for, for redevelopment, for housing around landfills, I think that'd be a big win for us, and not to mention the change in language of the airport. So, I think it's a nice, nice legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan? All right. Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? All right. Please cast your vote. And the motion approves, is approved seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is number 18, consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments to the Parking Authority and the Transit Company Board of Directors. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
So, move?
All right.
Second?
Thank you. The motion has been made. Please cast your vote if there's no discussion. Thank you. The motion passes, and we are in closed meeting.